Roy, I talked to Morgan. She's not feeling very well.
Oh, okay.
My all. Peter Harold. All the principals.
Yeah, well.
Thanks to Asher.
Call the meeting to order, January 24th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Clerk the Legislature, do we have a roll? Members, please respond by saying present.
Chairman Diamond.
Present.
Legislator Hedwell.
Present.
Legislator Wilson.
Present.
Legislator Ducey.
Present.
Legislator Pep.
Present.
Legislator Isabel.
Present.
Legislator Pertel.
Present.
Legislator Kelly. Your legislator, Sweet.
Let the record reflect, Legislator Kelly is present.
We'll stand for the salute of the flag led by Legislator Isabel, and if you would arrange standing for a moment of silence.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united ally, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please arrange standing for the moment of silence, if we could, we have two former employees of Montgomery County that passed away this month, who I'd like to remember during the moment of silence. The first one was Ramona Walworth. She was a clerk for the Montgomery County Department of Social Services for many years, until her retirement. And also Andrew Alt II, who was employed for many years at Montgomery County Department of Public Works, and the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, retiring as a deputy sheriff. Andy, also a life member of the Town of Mohawk Volunteer Fire Department, and he served in the US Army as a tech sergeant during the Korean War, and received many honors, including Combat Infantry Badge, excuse me, United Nations Service Medal, the Bronze Service Star, the Korean Service Medal, and Purple Heart. So you could remember those two in a moment of silence, please. Public comment, anyone from the public wishing to speak before the legislature this evening? Seeing none, we'll move right into our presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first presentation is for an employee from the Department of Public Works who's retiring, Don Bear. Don, would you come forward, please? And Don is in Legislator Hedwell's district, and Legislator Hedwell will read the proclamation. And the executive, please come forward also. Stand right here, Don. How you doing?
Good.
Thank you.
He can hold this right here.
I got it. Oh, you got it?
He can hold on what he wants there. Okay. Whereas, Don Bear has offered more than two decades of service to Montgomery County, setting a positive example, being a role model. As a supervisor, while also being a dependable employee, and whereas Mr. Bear began his career in Montgomery County as a motor equipment operator number one on June 10th, 1996. And whereas Mr. Bear spent more than 10 years in that position before taking a role as a sign maintenance worker in 2007, and being promoted to working sign maintenance supervisor in 2013. And whereas for the past three years, Mr. Bear has been in charge of the sign shop, responsible for maintaining more than 14,000 signs countywide, across bridges, and county buildings, and 400 miles of roadway, and has been instrumental in keeping all those signs updated or replacing them in a timely manner. And whereas Mr. Bear has been responsible for all aspects of the sign shop, including required trainings and overseeing the sign maintenance workers, but also with contractors to supervise annual striping of county roads. And whereas Mr. Bear has made and installed new county welcome signs, and is currently installing the new Purple Heart signs, has developed programs with our municipalities through the county to address their sign needs, and has maintained the sign shop's inventory per state and federal standards. And whereas Mr. Bear is an avid outdoor man who loves archery and hunting, both he and his wife Linda worked as county employees providing services to the residents of Montgomery County. Now, therefore, if he resolve, the county executive Matt Al Ossenford, county chair Roy S. Diamond, and legislator Robert Hedwell Jr., on behalf of the Montgomery County legislator, hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, as an official date in Montgomery County to most gratefully recognize and show appreciation to wholeheartedly thank Don Bear for the 20 years of dedicated service to Montgomery County and its residents.
Congratulations. Andy, before we take the picture, can we have Linda come forward? Linda Bear, Don's wife, and also longtime employee in Department of Social Services as Legislator Hedwell.
Hey, real quick, before we take the picture, I just want to say a couple of quick things. First of all, I think there's going to be big shoes to fill, that's for sure, and hopefully people have paid attention in your years that they've been here. I just also wanted to offer, on top of the many miles of roads in the signage that needs to be done, I especially appreciate the sign shop putting up with the requests from the executive office, especially as it relates to our new branding initiative. And, you know, a lot of times when you change things at the county, you might get some pushback, but never once did anybody in the sign shop ever complain, or embrace the new things that we're trying to do. And I just want to say that I really sincerely appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Leader Hill?
I didn't bring my camera.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Just checking.
Don't worry, Andy will send it to you.
Thanks again. God bless you during the presentation.
Enjoy.
We really appreciate the Purple Heart sign, though. Legislators, Jesse's pet project, so it meant a lot to us.
They're going up now.
Good, perfect.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Exec, you want to say a word?
Yes, sir.
Our next proclamation is for Liberty, and this evening, we're going to be presenting a proclamation to Barbara Wool, Director of PR and Development, Jennifer Sanders, if you'll come forward, and also, in addition, George Jaglowski and Pam Sherman.
Hey, George. How you doing? How are you?
Pam was unable to make it.
Oh, okay.
Maybe the weather.
Bar.
Yeah.
I'll let Bob do that.
As many of you may know or may not know, I have a family member that has been with Liberty for 26 years. Liberty is an organization that you really don't want to count on their services, but when you need their services, they're there for you. They make everything in your life better. They help you through the ups and downs. Now, George Jaglowski's mom, and Pam Sherman, who was also going to be here, were two of the founding members 70 years ago. Do you remember that? They started an organization that now is a $65 million a year organization, providing services for about 400 individuals locally. They provide services in Montgomery County, they provide services in the state of Delaware, in three different counties, and they also provide services in Florida for geriatric care. They've added to our community with new dimensions in healthcare, who provide services, not was started to provide services for our consumers or our people, but it's turned out that they've become a major force in providing health services, such as dental and other primary care services for our community. Recently, Liberty started Liberty Fresh Market, which is, provides services to the community, but also provides services by training our individuals to become meaningful people in our, in our community. So on behalf of the Montgomery County legislator, legislative body, our chair, and our exec, I'd like to provide you, George, with this proclamation. We want to thank you very much.
Come on, George, you're going to have your picture taken.
Andy, if you couldn't provide a better camera?
Legislature's tough.
I have a feeling the budget's going to increase. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great job today. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. We're still in the public comment section.
Sir, do you have any?
Nobody else?
Nope. Go ahead. Could you state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Christian Rivera, Montgomery County resident. Came to talk about two things tonight.
Sure.
First being fireworks. Fireworks are a serious source of noise pollution, air pollution, that cause fires, injuries, and the greater quality of life. In 2015, the county board, the county board, opted into the sparkling devices law. This has had the effect of confusing people about the legality of fireworks, led to an explosion of the use, unintended. Fireworks that have 130 decibels are not some minor inconvenience, they're bombs and rockets exploding overhead. Given the county's opinion, I want to demand that the board, one, undertake a public information campaign against firework use, two, provide money for enforcement against violation of firework laws and noise ordinances to all municipal entities in the county, and three, to register state internal, look at legal action against states, which allow their state's residents to buy and traffic fireworks into the state. To residents, I want to say, do not allow yourself to be terrorized by rockets and bombs in your neighborhood, confront those terrorists, you're right to peace and quiet. Now, the second thing I want to talk about, changing topics. I want to change topics to the drug war, and I want to call your attention to the January 11th, 2017 article from the report, which is on the county website. Here, I'm going to read a little bit from this. It's barely been a week since Ms. McCoskey sworn as Montgomery County District Attorney. She's already working to pick up where her predecessor, James Conboy, left off to stop the flow of drugs in and around the county. We are well on our way to the recent drug bust in Amsterdam, she said. The plan was to eliminate the trafficking of drugs into Montgomery County. Digest that for a minute. It seems that Ms. McCoskey is under the impression that after 100 years of the drug war, that law enforcement, the state are going to somehow stop residents from consuming and selling processed plants, leaves, vines, mushrooms, et cetera. Yeah, this will be the year, boys and girls, after 100 years. Ms. McCoskey, law enforcement, the state, we the people hereby, which one knows, will no longer allow you to steal public welfare funds, so that you can attack our communities, families, and friends, while you've had your paycheck. Your conflict of interest is plain to see, no longer we allow the Republican, Democrat political actors to use drug oppression as a tool to oppress us. No more urinating on our heads and telling us it was raining. We the people have a right to use, grow, and sell recreational drugs, other than the already legal alcohol, tobacco, caffeine, and sugar. From the article again, I quote, "I would like personally to go into schools," Ms. McCoskey said, "I want them to have a face in the name." Well, Ms. McCoskey, it's only by holding hostage a captive audience of children who have no opportunity to openly question and criticize your system, I mean, excuse me, your war against them and their families, that is the only way you will be allowed to preach pro-drug war propaganda unquestionably. Ms. McCoskey, law enforcement in the state truly take their captains as fools, do not understand that the drug war is aimed at them. Elementary school students aren't able to understand this, whether you believe it or not, because I understood this elementary school, about being propagandized with the drug war, which we have suffered from, causes trillions of dollars in untold years of suffering people into cages. We the people demand an apology from Ms. McCoskey, law enforcement, the state, and the political class who has undertaken this vile war against us for so many years. We demand immediately, immediate recreational drug use and sales be re-prioritized to lowest priority. We demand a regulated, safe recreational drug market, which includes coca leaf, poppy, poppy flower, which is opium, you know, the main ingredient heroin, the active ingredient heroin, which, you know, you seem to think you can fool us with that one, mushrooms, LSD, et cetera. We demand this county by notify state and federal governments to support this drug war in all its forms is over.
Thanks for your comments, sir. Communications, Clerk of the Legislature.
Okay, I will have a copy of the Montgomery County Clerk's annual report, and the Board of Elections' annual report, as well. I did give you copies of the 2016 DMV use tax to date. I just wanted to point out that we had anticipated $300,000 in revenue from that for 2016, and we were over by almost $25,000. And the other thing, I wanted to just read a part of a letter, excuse me, Chairman Diamond asked me to send a letter to the new chairman of the board for Fulton County, and he responded, and I thought this one section was worthy of reading. Our two counties have a longstanding tradition of working together on key regional issues, including a great community college. I look forward to maintaining and communication between our two counties as we work to make our area even better. That's all.
Thank you, Clerk. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Reading the minutes of the previous meeting shall be dispensed with, unless the majority of the legislators would like them read. Not seeing that, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes. Legislator Pep, and Legislator Wilson. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, the acceptance of the budget transfers. I'd be looking for a motion in a second. Legislator Hedwell, sponsor. Need a second. Legislator Pertel, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Any old business in front of the legislature tonight? Any new business in front of the legislature? All right, we'll go right to the resolutions then. Resolution number 13 of 2017. Resolution confirming members of Montgomery County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Youth Alternatives, Incarceration, and Veteran Services, sponsored by Wilson and Pertle. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 15 of 2017. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreement with Eastern Medical Support LLC. Sponsors were Pertle and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 17 of 2017. Resolution amending the 2017 operating budget. Sponsors were Pertle and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 17 of 2017. Resolution amending the 2017 operating budget. Sponsors were Pertle and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 18. Resolution confirming the appointment of the Stop DWI Coordinator made by the county executive. Sponsors were Sweet and Pep. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 19. Resolution appointing members to the county planning board. Sponsors were Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 18. Resolution confirming the appointment of the Stop DWI Coordinator made by the county executive. Sponsors were Sweet and Pep. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 19. Resolution appointing members to the county planning board. Sponsors were Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 19. Resolution appointing members to the county planning board. Sponsors were Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 19. Resolution appointing members to the county planning board. Sponsors were Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 20. Resolution appointing members to the Montgomery County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. Sponsors were Legislator Hedwell and Legislator Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 21. Resolution amending the 2017 operating budget, 2016, 2017, snowmobile trails grant and aid program. Sponsors were Legislator Wilson and Pep. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 22. And this resolution requires two-thirds of the law to pass, because it's a local law. It's a resolution adopting introductory local law, Local Law 1 of 2017, a local law establishing energy benchmark requirements for certain county-owned buildings. Sponsors were Legislator Pep and Hedwell. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 23. Resolution appointing at-large member of Montgomery County Sanitary District Number One Board of Directors. Sponsors were Legislator Hedwell and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 24. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign an agreement between the Glover'sville-Johnstown Joint Wastewater Treatment Facility and the Montgomery County Sanitary District for sludge disposal. Sponsored by Legislator Hedwell and Pertle. Discussion. Just as part of the discussion, Legislator Sweet and I were at the meeting Saturday, and this is a backup agreement. The current agreement we have is with the Kansas County Area Wastewater Treatment Plant, and if they're unable to take the sludge or whatever, we have a backup agreement with Fulton County. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 24. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign an agreement between the Glover'sville-Johnstown Joint Wastewater Treatment Facility and the Montgomery County Sanitary District for sludge disposal. Sponsored by Legislator Hedwell and Pertle. Discussion. Just as part of the discussion, Legislator Sweet and I were at the meeting Saturday, and this is a backup agreement. The current agreement we have is with the Kansas County Area Wastewater Treatment Plant, and if they're unable to take the sludge or whatever, we have a backup agreement with Fulton County. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 25. Resolution transferring funds to cover the cost of replacing the flow meter at the Montgomery County Sanitary District Number One. Sponsors were Legislator Hedwell, Legislator Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 26. Resolution authorizing the exchange of equipment with the city of Amsterdam. Sponsors were Legislator Sweet and Hedwell. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution number 27. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreements for control of snow and ice. Sponsors were Legislator Isabel and Hedwell. And I need a sponsor to amend the date, change the date, which will be to September 2nd, 2016, to September 1st, 2017. That's what the original date was, and we're changing it to January 1st of 2017 to December 31st of 2017, so it's a one-year contract. Legislator Pertle? Legislator Wilson? Discussion on the amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. My understanding is that we're going to be forming a committee to look into payments going forward, as they relate to the actual expenditures in the individual towns?
That's correct, yeah. We can do that at the next committee meeting, we'll get the members together. I'd like to have Commissioner Mead involved with that also. Thank you, Legislator Jesse. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We the people demand an apology from Ms. McCoskey, law enforcement, the state, and the political class who has undertaken this vile war against us for so many years. We demand immediately, immediate recreational drug use and sales be reprimanded, reprimanded towards ties to the lowest priority. We demand a regulated, safe recreational drug market, which includes Coca-Cola, poppy, poppy flower, which is opium, you know, the main ingredient heroin, the active ingredient heroin, which, you know, you seem to think you can fool us with that one, mushrooms, LSD, et cetera. We demand this county body notify state and federal governments to support this drug war, and all its forms is over.
Thanks for your comments, sir. Communications clerk for the legislature.
Okay, I will have a copy of the Montgomery County Clerk's annual report and the Board of Elections' annual report as well. I did give you copies of the 2016 DMV use tax to date. I just wanted to point out that we had anticipated $300,000 in revenue from that for 2016, and we were over by almost $25,000, so, that's all right. And the other thing, I wanted to just read a part of a letter, excuse me, Chairman Diamond asked me to send a letter to the new chairman of the board for Fulton County, and he responded, and I thought this one section was worthy of reading. Our two counties have a longstanding tradition of working together on key regional issues, including a great community college. I look forward to maintaining and communication between our two counties as we work to make our area even better. And that's all.
Thank you, clerk. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Reading the minutes of the previous meeting shall be dispensable unless the majority of the legislators would like them read. Not seeing that, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes. Legislator Pep and legislator Wilson. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, the acceptance of the budget transfers. I'd be looking for a motion in a second. Legislator Hedwell, sponsor. Need a second. Legislator Pertel, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, the acceptance of the procurement record. Been looking for a sponsor in a second. Legislator Wilson, the sponsor. Legislator Isabel, the second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 13 of 2017. Resolution confirming members Montgomery County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Youth Alternatives, Incarceration, and Veteran Services. Sponsored by Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 17 of 2017. Resolution amending the 2017 operating budget. Sponsors were Pertel and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 18. Resolution confirming the appointment of the Stop DWI Coordinator made by the county executive. Sponsors were Sweet and Pep. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Any old business in front of the legislature tonight? Any new business in front of the legislature today? All right, we'll go right to the resolutions then. Resolution number 13 of 2017. Resolution confirming members Montgomery County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Youth Alternatives, Incarceration, and Veteran Services. Sponsored by Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution 14 of 2017. Resolution supporting intermunicipal agreement for services from the Amsterdam Fire Department, City of Amsterdam. Sponsors were Pertel and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 15 of 2017. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreement with Eastern Medical Support LLC. Sponsors were Pertel and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 16 of 2017. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign agreement for inmate dental services. Sponsors were Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 17 of 2017. Resolution amending the 2017 operating budget. Sponsors were Pertel and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 18. Resolution confirming the appointment of the Stop DWI Coordinator made by the county executive. Sponsors were Sweet and Pep. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 19. Resolution appointing members to the county planning board. Sponsors were Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution appointing members to the Montgomery County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. Sponsors were legislator Hedwell and legislator Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution number 21. Resolution amending the 2017 operating budget, 2016, 2017 snowmobile trails grant and aid program. Sponsors were legislator Wilson and Pep. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution number 22, and this resolution requires two-thirds of the vote to pass because it's all local law. It's a resolution adopting introductory local law, Local Law 1 of 2017, a local law establishing energy benchmark requirements for certain county-owned buildings. Sponsors were legislator Pep and Hedwell. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution appointing at-large member of Montgomery County Sanitary District Number One Board of Directors. Sponsors were legislator Hedwell and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 24. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign an agreement between the Glover'sville-Johnstown Joint Wastewater Treatment Facility and the Montgomery County Sanitary District for sludge disposal. A legislative, sponsored by legislator Hedwell and Pertel. Discussion. Just as part of the discussion, legislator Sweet and I were at the meeting Saturday, and this is a backup agreement. The current agreement we have is with the Kansas Area Wastewater Treatment Plant, and if they're unable to take the sludge or whatever, we have a backup agreement with Fulton County. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 25. Resolution transferring funds to cover the cost of replacing the flow meter at the Montgomery County Sanitary District Number One. Sponsors were legislator Hedwell, legislator Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution number 26. Resolution authorizing the exchange of equipment with the City of Amsterdam. Sponsors were legislator Sweet and Hedwell. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreements for control of snow and ice. Sponsors were legislator Isabel and Hedwell, and I need a sponsor to amend the date, change the date, which will be to September 2, 2016, to September 1, 2017. That's what the original date was, and we're changing it to January 1 of 2017 to December 31 of 2017, so it's a one-year contract. Legislator Pertel?
Legislator Wilson?
Discussion on the amendment.
Yes, Mr. Peter. Understanding is that we're going to be forming a committee to look into payments going forward as they relate to the actual expenditures in the individual towns?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
We can do that at the next committee meeting, we'll get the members together. I'd like to have Commissioner meet involved with that also. Thank you, legislator Jesse. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? We're going to vote on the resolution as amended. Need discussion on that. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution as amended?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign a contact Johnson Controls for HVAC Service and Replacement. Sponsors were legislator Sweet and Hedwell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution authorize the county executive to execute Amendment Number One with an agreement with CME Associates for the FMCC Student Union Addition and Renovation Project. Sponsors were legislator Pertel and Wilson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing county executive to execute a change order number two for ad or on-deck cabling for the FMCC Student Union Addition and Renovation Project. Sponsors were legislator Pep and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 31. Resolution confirming appointments made by the county executive to the Board of Ethics. Sponsors were legislator Wilson and Pep. Discussion.
Chair, just in the rear ass, there's a Michael McKinnney is K-E-N-N-Y.
Okay. Just a typo. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 32. Resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with Collar City for provisions of auctioning services. Sponsors were legislator Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 23. Resolution confirming appointments made by the county executive to the Montgomery County Soil and Water Conservation Board of Directors. Sponsors were legislator Pertel and Sweet. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution appointing a member of the legislature to Cornell Cooperative Extension of Fulton and Montgomery Counties Association Board of Directors. Sponsors were legislator Pertel and Pep. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 35. Resolution appointing a member of the Montgomery County Law Library Board of Trustees. Sponsors were legislator Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Legislator Peppers.
Yes.
Resolution number 36. Resolution appointing member of Montgomery County Jury Board. Sponsors were legislator Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the sale of real property acquired by tax foreclosure down of Mindon. Sponsors were legislator Sweet and Hedwell. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Resolution number 38. Resolution approving abstract of audited claims. Sponsors were legislator Wilson and Hedwell. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
That's it for the resolutions? Any legislators have anything under other? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Legislator Kelly, second, legislator Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.